Continue here. We need a quorum. Is Councilmember Chow or Councilmember Sinkz available? Okay. Okay, we have a quorum now, so next is the public hearing to vacate portions of a public utility easement for water line purpose is and a portion of an emergency access easement located at 23-500 Cristo Way Drive. Have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Chad Mosley, City Engineer. This is way of staff report. Basically, this is a continuation of the notice of intent to vacate that we heard on December 17th. At this one here, this is the public hearing to actually vacate the easements. We have two easements, a portion of a public utility easement as well as a portion of an emergency vehicle access easement that are being modified to address adjustments that are being made in the field to facilitate construction of the forum located at 23-500 Cristo Way Drive. Per the California Streets and Highways Code, it requires a two-step process for vacation of a public easement. Again, on December 17th, we had the notice of intent and today we're actually doing the actual vacation of that and that's basically after tonight, we'll record the vacations and the new easements as appropriate. I'm here for any questions.
Are there any cards on this item, Madam City Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions by any council members? Okay, seeing none. Somebody want to move that we adopt the resolutions?
I move that we adopt resolutions number 20-003 as well as 20-004 with respect to the vacation of the easements described by staff.
Second vote.
The motion carries with Willie Ebsen.
That was fast, okay. Item 12, we are not doing. We are, hm? Right. We're, ooh, we're on to item 13. My favorite, weeds.
Yeah, so this one I'll recuse myself, I'll make a public comment.
Okay, we still have a quorum, okay. This is the abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08 and Resolution Number 19-141, hearing for impacted property owners to contest the matter of proposed abatement. So can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So your action here this evening is to adopt the draft resolution, which is ordering the abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards and to conduct the hearing for impacted property owners to contest the matter of proposed abatement. And we have Mo Comrie and Brian Rosa from the County Weed Abatement Program to answer your questions and to provide a brief presentation.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the presentation. And are there any cards on this item?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Brian Rosa. I am an inspector here with the County Weed Abatement Program. We offer fire safety monitoring in most jurisdictions throughout the county. We definitely serve the city of Cupertino with our monitoring inspections. So I'll just go ahead and jump right into how we operate. I was asked to provide a brief presentation as to how we process ads and notify and all that good stuff. So properties are added to the program one of two ways. An inspector has an active list of parcels that were historically a problem in the past. While inspecting that list, going from one property to another, we'll just find properties that are not displaying the minimum fire safety standards and include them with an ad process. So just inspector finding it in route. The next possible way will be reported by either the public or a city official. If the public is providing the report, we'll launch an investigation, make sure we're not getting in the middle of a neighborly dispute and look into the concern. If it's a city official providing the request, we'll go ahead and automatically add the property to the program and we'll request photographs from, I believe in Cupertino, it's code enforcement and coordinate with the code enforcement. And we'll also gather our own information to back up that request. Jumping into the first contest of the night.
This is an example of what we see.
Okay, this is an example of what we encounter. And like I mentioned, while we're actively inspecting the properties that are on the list, if we see something like this, it's caused to take pause. This is a concern. We gathered photographs in 18, again in 19. Both those years were declared ad years for this property, so this property has not yet had the opportunity to display compliance and be assessed fees. So after the ad notice is sent out to the owner, and I want to step back, and that ad notice is pretty powerful. Usually, it triggers communication with the property owner so that we can relay the standards appropriately and so we can communicate how best to comply with the program. They also have another opportunity to be notified with a commencement notice packet. In that packet, we provide the return reply form, an agency director letter, brochure, once again detailing the standards of the program and reviewing compliance, and the legal notice to destroy weeds. Yes, that notice definitely provides information as to the location of the hearing, the time, and how to best participate with the program. We sent that out in December for this jurisdiction, and here we are today for the January hearing to contest inclusion. April 30th, we'll begin the inspection monitoring process, and the window of inspection runs from April 30th until October 31st in this jurisdiction. After that, there is a second opportunity to contest, and that is offered at the assessment hearing. That's done in the summertime. Current status of parcel, not much change. So we're looking for some compliance and just to make sure that the standards are being met. We like to offer onsite visits. These visits often detail what is required, what's needed, what's concerning the inspector, and the best steps forward. So to be removed from the program, you know, I put two ways, but there's ultimately three ways. If the council decides that the removal is appropriate, we'll go ahead and act on that decision. But typically, we require three consecutive years of voluntary compliance to be removed or if the parcel is built and landscaped, so that concern is not reoccurring. So typically, that's how properties get removed, and we can also do it at the guidance of the council, like I mentioned. Are there any other questions?
So once a parcel is added, right at the beginning, they're required to pay the $80 per year or not? He's shaking his head, so.
The initial inspection fee is not applied to property tax until the first active year. The ad year is set aside for communications and to relay the standards to the property owner. It's also the best time for the onsite visit.
Right, okay.
Let me, I just want to make sure I say this so that it stays the right way. No fees can be assessed against the property until you have approved the property's inclusion.
Okay.
So it has to go before you first.
Okay, great. And then, so I know it's been an issue, and I've seen it on several properties that I've walked by or bicycled by where I'll see native plants and native grasses, and if I didn't know any better, I would say, oh, you know, those are really tall weeds, but they're not. I mean, what is the training for your staff to distinguish between what is a weed and what might be a native grass or a native plant that doesn't really, that really does look like a weed?
Well, as our brochure indicates, in some cases, even with some of those native plants, they may need to be mitigated just like other grasses. But when there is a disagreement, if a property owner feels that their plants should be considered not to be a weed, we would work with the agricultural department, the agricultural biology department, and they can confirm whether those plants pose a risk or not. And with that consideration, we can deal with the property owner on the best course of action.
Okay, great. Before I go to public comment, do you have anything, Darcy?
So with regard to this process that you're just describing, when you work with the agricultural department, is there any kind of documentation or recordation of the agricultural department stating, well, in our assessment, this is actually something that could potentially be a fire hazard? Or is that just a communication between your department and the agricultural department? Is there a record that people can ask and say, hey, look, you know, we're pointing to this and that communication where they've actually identified this as something you can proceed with and tell the resident that, look, you know, this needs to be abated?
We don't currently have a formal process. We work with them, and they sit right next to me in the building. We can either take samples of the plant or photographs of the vegetation that we see. They can inform us as to what they believe it is and whether or not they believe it to be a hazard.
Okay.
And then we can address it. I believe that if somebody wanted that, I could get a report from the biologist, but it's not been asked for up to this point.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hey, Rod, do you have anything before I go to public comment? All right, so I have three cards here. Liang Chow, Brent, looks like Brent Bardish, I can't read the name, and then Heidi Wong. Welcome, Liang Chow.
Hello.
Can you state your name?
Hi, this is Liang Chow, I'm speaking for myself. So this is my property in December, on the 3rd. So there are weeds. I thought they are not very tall, but anyway, on the bottom is what they, it is now, I've cleaned it all up. And this is the full front of the property. The other left side is already the neighboring property. So the only part that's facing front with landscaping is here. So I'd like to request that my property be removed from the list. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Liang. Next is Brent, welcome Brent.
You looking for me?
I am.
See, I stand here?
Yep.
Here's a lucky penny.
Okay.
Council and staff, Brent Bartley, 10408 Menheart. Here I am again. Just to review why I'm here, on 5/18, I had an inspection on my property. There was no warning notice, no courtesy notice. All of a sudden, I was just on the list. Nobody explained why. So I phoned the department, the weed abatement department up. Of course, they don't answer the phone down there, but eventually Brian called me back. He's given me permission to play his message. Uh-oh. It's not working. Timer's not working. Oh, here we go, okay.
Parcel is not quite active yet this year, so the first initial inspection fee will be placed on property tax roll starting next year. Brent to be removed from our program, we require three years in a row of meeting the standards. And Brent, we can definitely work together to make sure that the standards are met for the first time next year. So to get started, get the ball rolling on getting off the program. Brent, the area of concern is your front yard. There's a bunch of grasses commingled with ornament, ornamental vegetation in the front, so just make sure that those grasses are removed to meet the standard.
Okay, so that's it, you heard what he said. Grasses commingled with ornamental vegetation. He didn't say anything else. He didn't say anything about my utility trailer or clutter in the yard or, today I hear palm fronds, last time I heard something about plywood. My utility trailer seems to be a very big focus, but you heard what he said, right? The only thing he said was, "Grasses commingled with ornamental vegetation." It's very clear. You heard him say it, right?
Yes.
Okay. So as you know, the council removed my property from the weed abatement list based upon this meeting last year on February 19th. By the way, Ganghai Fat Choi. And the council again removed my property on, in July, I think it was July, maybe it was June, in 2019. And those two removals were based on the 5/18 inspection and the 5/19 inspection, based on the presentation by the weed abatement officer. So that's why I'm here. Are you able to see that?
Not quite. Can we get a little more focus here?
Do I need to do something?
Uh, no.
Okay.
We're pausing the timer, so, okay. Go ahead.
So I want to explain what my garden objective is. I actually, I'm very interested in gardening, and I appreciate the, a great climate that we have here in Cupertino, and I think it's a great hobby, especially for somebody who is kind of on the retirement age. People, people tell me I'm in my declining years. What that means is if anyone offers me a job, I decline it.
Move along.
Okay, so. Cupertino scene, restoring the wild. This is an encouragement of the city of Cupertino to develop habitat for the monarch butterfly and other endangered species. So I wanted to do that. I take these recommendations seriously from the city of Cupertino. Voila, a monarch butterfly. Now you can see in that photograph that there are some things that look like weeds. Most of them are native radish, native daikon. Those are very important to the native butterflies and insects, the bumblebees, the butterflies, and also to the birds. They develop seed pods and very important for the birds. This is me enjoying the butterfly. People come by walking down the sidewalk all the time and compliment or say how much they enjoy seeing the butterflies in my little butterfly area there, right along the edge of the sidewalk. Dog walkers compliment me all the time for, you can see the butterfly that I'm looking at there. So, let's see, back here. So last month, I came before the council because I was wondering why my name was on the 2020 list after, because the council already litigated the issue of the 5/19 inspection, right? So why am I on the, on the 2020 list? So, but according to the city attorney, I was, I had a misunderstanding in that I was still supposed to be on the list. But the mayor told me something I had never heard before. This was 18 months into the process. What he told me was that it's based on a neighbor's complaint. Now, this is very surprising to me because I've lived in Cupertino for 36 years, never had a neighbor complain about weeds before. I don't think I've ever heard a neighbor even mention the word weed to me before as a complaint. So I decided, well, maybe there's something I'm not understanding, I better talk to my neighbors. Right? That makes sense? Some of my neighbors were actually outraged that I was, that I was being harassed like this, and I asked them to sign a petition. They're all very happy to do so.
Sure. Give it to the city clerk, please. And then try to finish up. You've had like six, six minutes already.
This is the petition of my closest, longest-term neighbors. Asking, asking that I, we ask you to kindly remove Brent's property from the weed abatement order.
Okay.
Let's see. Now, in the, in the last, in last month, a controversial topic came up, which was the issue of fairness, and I wanted to expound on that. The mayor asked me to wrap it up, but.
Right, yeah, because we, yeah, we can read all this. You don't have to read every, every word to us on, on the paper.
The golden thread of justice, presumption of innocence, claims must be proved with evidence, burden of proof is on the accuser, equal treatment, and no anonymous complaints. This all started 800 years ago when King John signed the Magna Carta, and it's been refined over the years, that's why it's called the golden thread of justice. So what all this means to me is that I am not required to prove I don't have any weeds. The weed agent is required to prove that I do. He has to use evidence, not with allegations, and the proof must demonstrate that the weeds are serious and well beyond the neighborhood and city norm. Complaining neighbor should also be required to appear. Where is this neighbor, by the way? So far, the neighbor has never appeared before the council that I know of.
Okay, thank you. So I have one question for Mo. I, when I had asked earlier about weeds versus grasses.
Yes.
And maybe this is relevant here, I'm not sure. So thank you, Brent. Yeah, you have like 10 minutes, so can we finish up and Mo?
I would like to show you the pictures of my property that I took today.
Okay, yeah, let Mo speak and then you can finish up. You can have 30 seconds after that, okay? Go, Mo.
Okay, you were asking me a question, you didn't actually get the question out.
Right, it was, I had asked earlier about, you know, how you distinguish between weeds versus grasses, and you had mentioned that grasses can also be a fire hazard, I believe you did mention that.
Yes, absolutely. Let me clarify what took place here. I'm not sure what the issue is regarding a neighbor because the initial ad for this property in 2018 was actually done by me, and it was a situation in which I was doing the investigations within that community, and I happened upon his property. I took the pictures, I showed them to you, and that year, you had removed this at this hearing and asked me to go back and look at it again in May of 2019. I looked at it again, it was not substantially different than it was when I looked at it in 18, and so I brought the same information to this council then. It was not my understanding at that time that it had been removed again, but rather the opposite. So if I'm wrong, please correct me and I'll, I'll address that appropriately. I'm very happy to work with the property owner. I'll take his pictures and his information to our biologists to ensure whether or not those plants that we see do pose a fire hazard. I know that the property owner is making, has made the statement about the situation changes. It's not that the situation changes, it's that there are more issues to deal with. We do deal with trees when limbs are beyond, are less than six feet off the ground or touching a structure. In this case, we know that the palm tree in the front has fronds that appear to be under six feet from the ground and should be trimmed up. And what we can see from the front, it appears there's another palm tree behind the fence line that they're actually touching, the fronds appear to be touching the fence line, which would pose a fire risk as well. As well as what we see, which appears to be grasses commingled with ornamental vegetation, which could pose a threat of fire close to his, I guess it's his utility trailer, I can't tell that from the street. We have never once entered the property, we have simply done this from a public right-of-way, which is our standard practice. We don't enter the property without first notifying the property owner. So that's the situation that we're at now, and of course, we'll do whatever the city council requests us to do, but I also, regardless of how you find, I'm happy to work with the property owner and with our biologists to determine what the appropriate course of action would be with this property.
Okay, thank you. So Brent, you can have 38 seconds to show the pictures. Can you restart the timer?
Okay, here's, here's one, to get an idea of how much the, to compare different properties, this is another property. Look at the weeds on this property. This is, this property is not on the abatement list. You can, you see, the weeds are taller than that person, right? That property is not on the abatement list. Now let me show you my property. These are photographs that I just took today. You can see I've tidied up the utility trailer a little bit because there seems to be a lot of concern about that. I've built some planter boxes along the edges there. This is the sidewalk, you can see there's no weeds there. This is the area I was showing you before. This used to be my rose garden, I had to destroy my rose garden because they wouldn't tell me where the weeds were located. All they would say is that there were grasses growing among the ornamentals. The only place I could figure that out was in the, was in the rose garden, so I removed all the roses. And, and this is the area that I showed you earlier with the butterfly garden. Now I can keep it like this, or I can return it to a butterfly garden, it's up to you. The butterfly life depends on that.
All right, you're, all right, thank you. That's, you know, we gave you 15 minutes now, so I think that's enough. Can we move on to the next speaker, Heidi Wang?
I wanted to finish up with one more thing. I'm requesting that my property does not exceed the neighborhood norm and should be removed entirely. and should be removed entirely from this abatement action, uh, as my neighbors actually requested.
Okay, thank you. Heidi Wong, are you here? Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I got, I'm the, uh, property owner of this, uh, building. Um, once I get the letter from, um, county of, Senator County, they en- enforced me to join their program. On May tenth, I got the notice. But before that, I didn't have anything, um, letter on warning me and everything. But anyway, after the letter, uh, I just want to explain the situation because my gardener went to Mexico for two months and the tenant didn't let me know, the gardener didn't let me know, so that's why, the inspector went to the house, um, the fun yard, and they found out the, um, the, they have a little bit weed, okay? I admitted, but after that, I followed the rule. This is the May twenty. You can see all the weed already cleaned up. And so no more weed in the fun yard. And this is the current one. Uh, I took the picture on January nineteenth. This year, everything is cleaned up. And you can see the picture. And this one. And also I want to prove it to you. I already hired the gardener to take, um, to take, um, this is the bill. I pay the gardener every other week, every single month. They will come to my rental house to take care of it. So I urge, um, the councilor to reconsider, um, remove, uh, my property, uh, from the list.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for being brief. So, Mo, do you want to comment on that?
Let's, uh, comment with this first. Last year, we brought on a new inspector, and I believe, looking at the photograph right now, that he may have been a little overzealous. So I would recommend that this property, the last speaker, that their property be removed from the list and that they not be included. That, I, I don't believe that the issue was severe at the time of the inspection.
Okay, and, and what about the first speaker, Leon Chau?
Trying to get that information right now.
Okay.
Let me, uh, plug this in and we'll it should come up on the screen.
Okay.
In, in the case of this property, it had the low-hanging branches with grass underneath those branches. At the time of this inspection, which was in September, uh, twentieth of 2019, and having high grasses and low branches in the trees just makes the problem more significant. Uh, I believe the pictures that I saw when, uh, she presented showed the same area, but with the tree either limbed. I, I didn't see the, the tree dangling so low and the grasses were cut. Our normal process is we see it during the fire season. We go through this process and then it's to you. So whichever ruling you choose to make is how we will go with that.
Right, but, so once, again, you notice the property owner, they have the opportunity to clean it up before they're put on the list, that's-
No, uh, once we see it during the fire season.
Oh, during, okay, okay.
It just goes on to the list for the next year, and their opportunity to get off the list is to come here and ask you for that.
Right, otherwise it'd be on for three years.
For three years or until they remove the, the threat. And I don't remember the picture right off the top of my head, but that may actually have happened here. I'd have to look at the property again.
They're on for three years because you're going to inspect for three years.
Well, it's-
They don't get off because they've trimmed the weeds, right?
No, normally they're on for three years and they remain on the list until they've demonstrated three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. Or, or they've mitigated the danger so it doesn't exist anymore. So if they've landscaped in a manner that it's no longer, it no longer has the threat.
I see. So there is a way to get off the list, but you have to do something very substantial, not just trim, trim the-
Not just trim it, but-
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Right, so in this case, was anything substantial done? Did they, was the tree trimmed in a way it would never-
One of the biggest concerns was the tree, and I'm looking at the picture that was provided by the homeowner, and it was substantially trimmed.
Oh, yeah, wow.
So, uh, this would be one of those six of one half dozen of the other type, type of situations, so this is going to be up to you to decide. Normally, I would say, being fair and consistent, I wouldn't remove it.
You would not?
I would not.
Okay. Right, this is, you know, made even more complicated.
Understood.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Do you like me to go first?
Sure, go.
Yeah, so I, I have to respect that, um, we have professionals that are making this assessment. And the point of this is fire safety. We are, uh, with climate change particularly, at risk for places burning down, even urban areas. We've seen this. We know, uh, based on climate, that, that, um, our communities are going to continue to dry out in wildfires while not, not historically, uh, common here on this side of the valley. Uh, we can expect them, right? And the whole point of this program is to be proactive. And just because you didn't pass one inspection is not a crime, you know? It's not, it's not, uh, the worst thing in the world. All it means is we've got to recover our costs so we will, uh, be inspecting until, uh, we see consistency in, in maintenance. And that's the whole point. I really think we have to stand by the professionals doing this work and, and, and use their best determination. And that, by, by doing that, we, we are fair to everybody. So I, I would go with, uh, Mo's recommendation here, uh, exempting the, if you think that person should not be on the list based on the data you have, I would, I would take that person off the list, but I would leave the other two on. And I think it's about as simple as that. We can't, we can't, you know, we're not in a position to, reevaluate at every one of these hearings, the details of every property. I think we're policymakers, and I realize we have an obligation to do this. I don't like it very much, and I bet a lot of people don't, but I, I don't think we ought to be trying to second-guess these folks, so that's where I stand.
So, so, Mo, you did mention that in the case of the Heidi Wong property, that the inspector might have been overzealous.
Actually, according to the picture, the inspector was a bit overzealous.
Okay.
That, it wasn't a significant overgrowth of, of grass. There wa, it was overgrown a little, but it does not look as though it had been months without being taken care of.
Right. I mean, so the issue I have, how do we know for each of these whether it was appropriate or, you know?
Well, I, I'm providing you with fourteen years of experience. I can look at those pictures and tell you that that one for, uh, Ms. Wong was definitely overzealous. The others, one I did personally, uh, and the other, the, the grass was much more significant, and the tree was much more significant.
Okay. Yeah. I don't have any other questions. I agree with Rob that I don't like doing this either. No one leaves happy. Okay, Darcy.
I, I, I think, I think that I would be okay with, uh, removing the three that are, um, being presented to us in the public hearing. And my bases are, are different for each one, and I definitely respect the recommendation of the representative from the county with regard to the overzealousness of, uh, one of the properties. I think, um, the property on Menheart Lane, it probably could, uh, benefit from some interfacing with, um, yourself, sir, as well as, um, a representative from the county department of agriculture, a biologist. I, 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 I hope that we don't see it again and that we have a, a resolution. Um, I know that we, we have said that pollinator paths are extremely important. And it is heartening to see, um, you know, uh, monarch butterflies that are going into, you know, that, that area. I, I, I know it's not a typical overgrown, um, you know, property. It, it's not necessarily thoughtlessly, uh, ignored. It looks like it was deliberately cultivated. I, I think maybe it's a communication, um, I don't want to say it's a communication issue, but I think it's something that could benefit from that kind of, uh, dialogue. Um, and, and so that's, that's respecting your expertise as well as, uh, the need for us to have, you know, some sort of process and finality. But I think, uh, I also, um, you know, I sympathize with the residents. Well, I, I don't want to use the word sympathize. I, 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 I respect the residents', um, efforts to go forward and, and thoughtfully, you know, you know, look at the yard. And, and like, uh, council member Willie said last time we were here talking about it, you know, not everyone creates their yards in the exact same kind of aesthetic manners, but I, I think that a little bit more, uh, discussion with regard to whether this is specifically, you know, remediable, uh, and, you know, what the, uh, standards are for inclusion of particular plant life would, would help, would help the overall process. Uh, with regard to the property that is on McLaren Place, it looks like there was pretty significant changes made, um, with regard to the, um, the property itself. I, I, as, as a procedural matter, I don't really like the idea of, um, basically saying, hey, look, if you, um, make these changes and we have these rules in effect, then let's go ahead and, you know, before you have the, uh, removal from the ad list, you know, come to the hearing and, you know, kind of speak your piece, so to speak. That, that's why I did ask the city attorney to provide a standard for potential removal. If that standard, you know, is not something that would really, you know, comfortably permit us to, um, in, in the efforts, in the interest of fairness and consistency, uh, remove it, then I would have, you know, second thoughts on it. But it looks like there have been very significant efforts to, um, mitigate this. And after all, this is a, this is a program that is, um, designed to make sure that the homeowners are compliant with, you know, fire safety, safety standards. And so if we're getting that achieved, uh, earlier on in the process, then I would, I, I would be fine with, uh, removing it. It's not ideal procedurally, I agree. But I will point out, we have eight pages of, uh, an appendix. There's a hundred and twenty-seven records. Uh, only three have showed up. And, and I think that in terms of the cost recovery, um, there are, there are, there are funds available from the hundred and twenty-four that didn't show up. Or maybe ninety-two records of a hundred and twenty-seven is what I'm reading. Um, so, so somewhere between ninety and a hundred and thirty are, you know, are, are out there. And, um, they're not here at the hearing tonight. But I would like to hear from our city attorney, uh, as to what the standard would be legally for removing, um, an address from this ad list. From this proposed ad list, I should say.
So the, your, the action for you tonight is to declare, um, properties that have weeds on them that constitute an existing public nuisance. And so, um, the municipal code defines what weeds are a public nuisance. Generally, it is weeds and indigenous grasses which have be, have attained such a large growth as to become a fire menace, um, to adjacent improved property. And also accumulations of garden refuse, cuttings, and other combustible trash. Your resolution, uh, declares that the properties on the list, um, have these weeds, these public nuisance weeds on them, and that they have, um, they are an existing nuisance which now must be abated. And so in order to adopt that resolution for any particular property, you need to have, it can't be arbitrary. You need to have evidence that, um, there is, uh, weeds that constitute, uh, a nuisance on those properties. The evidence is, is the, typically the, the information the county's provided about their inspections and the underlying documentation. Now you can find, based on other evidence that is presented, for instance, by the property owners, that you don't believe there is a current nuisance on this property that, um, the weeds do not, that this property does not contain weeds that are a nuisance and can remove the, the properties from the list on that basis.
So what if fifty other properties on that list have also mitigated their weeds since the inspection was done? I mean, but they didn't show up.
Well, you would, I would, you would need evidence that shows that they have done that, I would say, in order to-
Okay. So if they all showed up with evidence, we would be-
You can assess the credibility of the evidence. I don't, you don't need to take it blindly. For instance, you can say, well, we don't have proof that that, those pictures are current pictures, or we don't, you know, we don't think that this is sufficient evidence to override the assumption that the county has brought forward, that there is a continuing-
I mean, I'm inclined to give a little leeway to our residents here when they mitigate.
Yes.
And it was clear that all three people that showed up did mitigate. But on the other hand, you know, how many pe, other people would have showed up as well tonight if they had known? Hey, all we got to do is show up and prove that with photos that the threat has been mitigated and, and we're off the hook. So I, I just don't, yeah, the whole process, this whole process concerns me, and I appreciate what Darcy said. I'm kind of inclined to go along with that. But I also have a question, since there's only three of us up here now, how that works? If two of us vote to remove or two of us vote to not remove, how does that work?
Can you give me a minute to-
Sure.
Thanks. And maybe you can have discussion in the meantime. I'm just making sure there's not a, a specific vote requirement in the statute.
Okay. I do have another question for, for Mo, and, um, I, I want to clarify the idea that once you're on the list, you're on the list for three years. And I remember you had said, uh, previously that there's an opportunity to get off the list in the middle of that three years. Is that correct? Or are you on that list for three years no matter what?
Well, uh, you're on the list for three years unless you, uh, lands, build and landscape in such a manner as to remove the risk, the threat. The three years is a choice we've made in this county because we should, we believe that demonstrates a consistent effort to keep a property maintained in a fire-safe condition. The state laws that we use under the health and safety code actually permit leaving a property on permanently. We don't think that's a good idea, and I'm not suggesting it. I'm just showing that we're trying to be as reasonable as we can, but ensure that we're, we're seeing consistency in people taking care of the property. I have many examples of a property where one year we see it, we address it, the next year they cut it, and then the year after that, they don't. So, that we have found over the years that that just seems to be the, if they're doing it three years, they're probably going to keep doing it. But if they do it, just because they did it two years, doesn't mean they'll do it that third year.
I see. So basically, the ability to remove an address in the middle of that three-year period has to come with some kind of very significant landscaping changes. So for instance, if the issue was tall grasses and trees that had, um, I forgot what-
Low-hanging ones.
Low-hanging branches, six feet or below, uh, from the ground, then would the, so either the tree would have to be removed or those low-hanging branches would need to be trimmed away from the, the tree?
In the case of that particular property, the limbs clearly had been, uh, removed or at least, uh, raised up, so they didn't pose that. But all the same grasses that were long and also posed a potential threat where the grass is still there, that hasn't been taken out. Only half of the equation was removed.
I see. So then that homeowner would, well, okay. Now that we're inside of this realm of three-year list, uh, inclusion, then what you're saying is that for that instance, the homeowner would need to do something about the branches as well as do something about the grasses in terms of just making sure that there's no grass there to grow, uh, long potentially, is that-
Right, or maintain it for three years, in which case we would then automatically remove them.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to-
You're, you're looking at the early removal, I understand.
After a year.
But then it is also, uh, your prerog- But then it is also your prerogative to say that you believe that they made those substantial changes, and I'm bound to whatever you tell me in this particular case.
I see.
So I've given you a standard. We don't have to agree on whether that standard was met. You've got the, you have the final say, not me.
Okay, thanks.
And yes, the Cupertino municipal code establishes that all ordinances and resolutions require a vote of three members of the city council for passage. So you would need a majority of all of the quorum present to pass the resolution as to any particular property.
What's that?
The quorum present is three.
Sorry. Well, right, so, you're right, I misstated that. You need three votes to pass.
Okay.
And then that's in the municipal code.
Oh, so we have to get to a complete agreement here. I suppose we could...
Continue it, or...
I, well, I suppose we could, we could...
And you may take, you may pass the resolution as to certain properties...
Right, of course, yeah.
...as to other ones.
I was about to say that, but then the issue of fairness kind of, you know, kind of kicked in because of the fact that we're essentially putting three on hold, right? Or if we, if we did something like that. So we could continue a subset of those addresses for consideration at a later date, but then include the rest of the addresses? Is that, is that true?
Because this, yes, you could, you could continue the hearing as to those three properties.
I'm concerned about what effect this all has on the schedule going forward, and maybe, Mo, you could comment on that.
Well, first thing I'd like to point out is we may only be talking about two properties because, one, I believe that we should remove.
Correct.
So I don't think there's any disagreement on the Wong property. It's only the other two that were in question. The abatement inspections begin on April 30th. Whatever answer we have, we have to have prior to that, preferably at least 30 days to, because we would like to send out a 30-day notice to all the property owners that in, within 30 days, we'll begin our inspections. That's, that's, that's the best I can tell you. But if you want to hold the two for consideration, I mean, that's up to you.
So I have a question, the city attorney. Could Councilmember Chow vote on the second, on the Menhart property?
It is, it is possible to segment decisions, and so if she would like to recuse herself from properties for which she has a conflict, the council, she could, as long as the council votes on her property first, and then she could return to the dais and vote on the other properties. If the council chooses to segment, the determination, I will say, she has already recused herself for this entire hearing, though.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that would be for a later hearing at this point. She has not been a part of this discussion.
Well, I mean, I'm torn here. You know, perhaps, I mean, I hate to push this out to another meeting and go through this whole thing a second time, but, I mean, we may have an impasse here.
And if you seg, the other option is you vote on certain properties, that there may be three votes, and then the other ones fail to get the required three votes.
Right, okay, so...
And the resolution would not be adopted as to those.
I, my principle here is one of fairness to everybody who's on the list or off the list, frankly. So I would, I want to vote for the whole thing or nothing. I don't, this whole segmentation...
Including the Wong property.
No, as I said, I think I would trust Mo's judgment that that one should not be put on. So that's the one, because of what he said, that I would support removing, but the other two ought to be on.
But, you know...
Also based on his evidence and what he said.
In terms of fairness...
And fairness to how we evaluate every other property in every other jurisdiction, and used to be including ours, I mean...
I mean, everyone on the list had the opportunity to show up, too, so, you know, they all had that opportunity. It's not unfair.
I understand. This is a question of whether we are, you know, doing our oversight and inspection and expecting that, you know, all the residents get the same treatment under this program. So that's where I stand.
Okay, and I would con...
Continue this if you like, but...
I would contend that all the residents are getting the same treatment, and they all have the opportunity to come here and show why they should not be on the list. The fact that only three showed up, that's up to them.
No, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, I think, I think the best thing that we should do is vote all of the items, with the exception of 10-408 Menhart, as well as 10-175 McLaren Place, and continue those two residences. And this is a matter of fire safety, and if we're looking at somewhere on the order of 100 other properties that would be held up because of our inability to reach three votes for, for these two, I think then that becomes the broader matter of public safety. But if we can't get to that consensus this evening, then I would suggest that we continue it until our next council meeting, being the first one in February.
Right, I'm willing to continue it as much as I wish we could not continue it, but I think we have an impasse with only three council members here, no matter which way, you know, that I would personally vote. Okay, so...
And then can we, it, so do you, do you have a motion then, or...
No, it's his prerogative to table it and not call the...
Well, we can still...
So I'm just thinking, for purposes of public hearings, I think we want to make clear that we're continuing it to a date certain, so that those here have noticed...
Right, no, I wanted to adopt all but those two properties tonight and continue the other two until we have...
To a date certain, February.
Right, the next, the next meeting, and then hopefully we'll have Councilman Willie back and we can reach, reach a consensus one way or another.
I'd like to request to be pushed to February 18, just for purposes of noticing, adequate noticing.
Well, I, we've already noticed the hearing, so we're just continuing it as to those two, to a date certain, so I don't believe we need to resend out the notice to do that.
Okay, so I guess...
But, but we would need a vote to adopt, if your intent is to adopt the resolution as to the properties on Exhibit A, excepting 10408 McLaren and 10175 McLaren, McLeaver, sorry.
No, not, okay.
The first one's Menhart, second one's...
Menhart, yes, thank you.
Right, it's one, it's 10175 Menhart?
No, 10175 McLaren.
McLarens, and...
10408 Menhart Lane.
10408 Menhart Lane, okay. Okay.
I don't think you, I mean, I...
What?
I think it would be constructive to ask if you have your third vote, I mean, for, for that motion. I mean, before you make it, I just, I mean, I'll second it.
Right. I mean, so, Councilman Sykes, would you vote in favor of a motion adopting the resolution except for those two properties?
No, I would not.
Okay, then we have to continue the whole thing.
Then I'll move that we continue this item until February 4th.
Okay. I'll second, but do we have two votes, three votes for that? Okay.
Of course, I think that's a fair question.
Okay, vote.
I'm not seeing anything on the screen here.
Kirsten.
Okay, start over.
Now, reset.
Please start over.
So this is a motion that would continue this to the next council, regular council meeting, right?
Yes.
Let's see, February 4th was stated right, which is the next council meeting.
All right. Let's just do a voice vote.
Okay, do a voice vote.
Is it not working?
It's not working.
Vice Mayor, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries with Willie absent and Chow recused.
And so unrelated to this, I have a request of our city manager. Can we get these systems fixed? Because this is months and months that the timers are flaky, and, you know, and the, and the voting system is screwed up. And sometimes if you hit it, it will start working, sometimes it won't. Now it's working.
I'd just like to make clear, I'm not trying to get personal with anybody in the audience who came to see us. I've been very consistent with my vote through the entire time on the council. To me, this is just treating everybody the same, and, and that's all, okay? I'm done.
We are done with weeds. We are on to Item 14. Adopt the Subcommittee Recommendations to Improve Commission and Committee Engagement with Council. Oh, Councilmember Chow may return. Adopt Subcommittee Recommendations to Improve Commission and Committee Engagements with Council. Standardize Protocol Among Commissions and Committees, and adopt an Ordinance Repealing Ordinance 006 Regarding Adoption of Roberts Rules of Order, and amending Chapter 2.08 of the Cupertino Municipal Code accordingly. So may we have the staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Katie Namora, Assistant to the City Manager. So the Subcommittee comprised of Vice Mayor Paul and Councilmember Chow have developed over the last year recommendations regarding commissions, committees, and there are some that do pertain to council, such as the parliamentary procedure, which would adopt Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a parliamentary procedure, which is why we would then adopt the ordinance to repeal ordinance number 006 that sets Roberts' Rules of Order as the council's parliamentary procedure. And so as an attachment, you see the 33 recommendations they have before you, and we are available for questions.
And what version of Roberts' Rules are operative in Cupertino right now?
I think the 75th edition, and let me find the date for you. It's from long ago.
Okay, I mean, are we talking about perhaps half a century ago, that version of Roberts' Rules?
Yes, that one.
Okay, just, just to put that information on the table, because I, I'm sure that's not common knowledge, that under our municipal code, we're required to use this very antiquated version of Roberts' Rules, which of course, you know, people haven't been doing that.
Correct.
Right.
Right, and then the Roberts' Rules of Order that you're speaking of is an entire book, whereas Rosenberg's Rules of Order is comprised in 10 pages, which is much easier to digest and train and follow.
Right, and it's, it's essentially a simplified version of Roberts'.
For our purposes, and what the city uses it for in our commission meetings and council meetings, it's essentially a subset of Roberts' Rules of Order, simplified version, yes.
Great, thank you. And I do want to thank you for all of your efforts over the course of the last several months, working with the Subcommittee and getting those recommendations pared down and consolidated with our couple of, you know, efforts at public outreach prior to this, as well as the commission input. I think it's just so important that we, you know, have this, this effort done right because it's such, you know, a central mechanism of our, of our public feedback. And, you know, having gone through, you know, probably at least, I would say maybe 10, but at least half a dozen sessions with yourself and the city manager and Councilmember Chow, I know that we've gotten this set of recommendations into a really, really good and effective format in terms of trying to, you know, consider what we've been doing in the past that perhaps is not the most efficient or effective, but also addressing some things that are just not really either uniform or even applied in, in some instances. So, for example, if we're trying to figure out how does a particular item get onto the agenda of a commission, the question has been left open as to whether that is something that is driven by staff or by the chair of the commission, or are there a certain number of commission members that aren't, or committee members that aren't the chair, that are able to get that proposed? And so we really identified those, those gaps and those inconsistencies, and have managed to come up with a set of recommendations that I think going forward will make it a lot more useful in terms of our, you know, public input gathering, you know, exercises that we have across all commissions and committees, including the city council. So thank you very much for your efforts.
I too am appreciative of all the work of the Subcommittee and staff. It seems like a thoughtful document. We've taken our time to do it, and, yeah, I like the, the result of this, this work product. I like the adoption of Rosenberg's Rules, I think at times, right? This is going to apply to the council as well, I assume, right?
Correct.
Not just the commissions. And I think at, at times, we could use some, the, the kind of meeting management tools that Rosenberg allows, right, that are not part of our familiar practice today. So I think it's a, it makes sense to, to do this.
So I have a question, the city attorney. I presume since Darcy and Leong created this, they don't have any questions on it. So, but the issue I have a question about is, is the Planning Commission to be treated any different than other commissions and committees? Because I recall advice that we should not probably attend Planning Commission meetings. So is there, should there be anything in Item 1 where it says we should be attending at least one meeting per year of each commission and committee?
That's a really good point.
Well, council may attend noticed public meetings of other bodies. You may choose not to speak at those meetings for other reasons, for instance, not potentially stating your position on an item that might come before you, but you can attend and observe those meetings, and, and you are allowed to speak at Planning Commission meetings as well. That's not a violation of the Brown Act. There are other reasons that people choose to refrain from actively participating in those meetings for, so that they keep an open mind.
But, I mean, on these semi-judicial things, my understanding is we shouldn't be weighing in.
It's, I mean, my advice is to try to avoid making statements that suggest you have already made up your mind about the project before it comes to the city council, but that doesn't mean that you can't attend the meeting.
Right, I mean, I would be wary of any of the commissions of almost interfering with the work they're doing. I would want, I might want to observe, which also may affect what they do.
Yeah, and that's a reason that other council members also choose not to speak at, at other commission meetings, is they want the commissions to give them advice, and that is, and that you can see that as the role of the commissions.
But I think you wrote this as, the two of you that did this, as encouraged, right? It's encouraged to attend a meeting a year.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
So I, I think, right, we all have to be thoughtful about how we interact with the commissions, not to, to let them, yeah, do their work without coming down on them for considering an idea that we might think is bizarre or whatever, right? We, we have to let the process work.
So I, yeah, so the very first section is trying to encourage more communication, either in the commission meeting or even informally with commissioners through coffee, because I feel in the past, it seems there has almost no communication between the council and the commissioners. However, I'd like to point out that in, like, cities like Los Altos, they have one designated city council member sitting in, participating in every commission meeting. So it's not like that it's legally not allowed.
Right.
So it's, because I've, I find out when I attend, a lot of times, I help clarify directions from the council, and, but of course, what we need, like Heather pointed out, what we need to be careful is not to give out our positions. And also, I think Heather clarified, she said she'll write a memo later, that in case we happen to, maybe three of us happen to attend a commission meeting... At most two can speak. And as long as we all, we don't all speak in the same meeting, it's still okay, right?
Okay.
It, it, that also could get in a Brown Act violation. If, if two council members speak, there's a third present and you weigh in on something coming before the council. Then the third is in the room hearing, right? So I think we just have to, we have to understand that.
That's not a violation, I think.
Well, if you're stating what you think should happen.
Yeah, that's a good point. We probably shouldn't ever have three.
I mean, the Brown Act prohibits this, right? Basically, so we have to be thoughtful about how we weigh in and who's in the room, I think.
Right, if, if, if you have a majority of the members of the city council in a meeting, it needs to, discussing city business, It needs to be noticed as a city council meeting.
But then, I thought we are saying we are not giving positions in these commissions, right? Even if some people ask questions, you are not really giving positions?
No, but if two people speak and a third is present, that would not be appropriate. If three people are present and no one speaks.
Sorry, you're sort of putting me on the spot here. And, and it depends if it's, if it's a city meeting or a staff called meeting and, and so I'd like to, Before I start saying things that commit myself to statements to, to just pause a second on this.
I mean, one thing I will say, in, in the language where it is encouraged that Council members attend these commission meetings at least once a year, The city attorney did ask that we add a parenthetical that states consistent with Brown Act requirements.
Right.
And so with regard to the text of these recommendations, Our obligations to make sure that we're not violating these communication based And public notice requirement based regulations. Governing our regulations has already been placed inside of these recommendations.
And, and I'm recalling now, you can have a majority attend a notice public meeting of another body, Provided you don't discuss amongst yourselves the, the material that's subject, that's within your jurisdiction.
Okay. Are there any comment cards? Okay, and so city attorney, is it okay to specify a specific beverage in number one?
Oh, coffee.
I mean, what if somebody want to have teas?
Tea drinkers is not a protected class and so.
All right, then let's leave it, leave it as it is, okay.
I appreciate the lemmety, actually, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
Ma'am, I'd like to move that we adopt the Subcommittee's recommendations, which are attachment A to the item.
Sure, I'll second. Vote.
The motion carries with Willie absent.
I'd like to ask the city clerk to conduct the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash two one nine six.
This is the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash twenty-one ninety-six. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino repealing ordinance number zero zero six regarding adoption of Robert's.
Did you say zero zero six?
Yes.
Our sixth ordinance ever?
It's a very old ordinance.
No prefix. That's how old it is.
Right, so we've been using Roberts Rules of Order since
Well, they're not.
About nineteen fifty.
Fifty-five, nineteen sixty, yeah.
Wow, that version of Roberts Rules.
Right.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt.
Ordinance number zero zero six regarding adoption of Roberts Rules of Order and amending chapter two point zero eight Of the Cupertino Municipal Code accordingly.
I move that ordinance number two zero dash two one nine six be read by title only And that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
Second. And next, we're going to excavate other fossils, so. Oh, you haven't voted yet. Oh, sorry.
The motion carries with Willie absent.
Thanks very much, Council Member Chow, enjoyed working with you on the Subcommittee. Thank you very much for your stick-to-itiveness and your always very thorough and insightful comments.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Katie also. Thank you for your patience and this is painstaking. But then I'm really, really glad we got it done, yeah.
Okay, we are on to item ten, adopt the city of Cupertino ethics policy. So can we have our staff report?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager. So at a council meeting, it was delegated to the city attorney and the city manager to draft a code of ethics. And so after, after working on this item, they've called it a ethics policy. And there are three options before you today. There is a, in attachment A, is one that was based mainly on Palo Alto's Code of Ethics. They call it an ethics protocol. This one was circulated to the commissions for their feedback, which is also attached. And the attachment B is an ethics policy that is based off of Morgan Hill's ethics policy. And attachment C is an ethics policy that is values based. And I will make a note that these ethics policies are meant to be aspirational and are meant to guide behavior, But generally are not meant to be enforceable necessarily.
Okay. So why do you make us have such difficult choices between three different ones? I mean, can you discuss the pros and cons of each one for us?
So the attachment A is definitely lengthier. There were some comments that you'll see from the commissioners that felt, some of them felt there were That it might encourage them not to speak out on what they believe. But that is, I want to clarify that that's not the intent of this policy. It is meant to have free discussion, just respectful discussion. And the city's attorney, city attorney's office made edits in response to the feedback. I will say that the attachment B, Morgan Hill based, is In essence, very similar to attachment A, it's just a kind of a pared down version. And the values based is beneficial in the sense that it is just very clear about what are the values that the city is putting forth In terms of ethics. It, it really comes down to how specific and detailed do you want to be? It's, it kind of goes from most detailed to least detailed as you go down the list.
Right, okay.
We also made a concerted effort not to just restate law and things that we could find other places.
Yeah, I appreciate This work and, and the modifications. I mean, personally, I kind of prefer the Palo Alto version, attachment A. But willing to listen to all of our council members here.
Yeah, I, I like it too. I, I think it helps really to, to clarify. I find the last one just so broad as to be interesting, but I think, I think it can be helpful, especially at times when we're heated or things go, get out of whack. There's actually, so I, I went online today and I looked at The Palo Alto one, and what you've done is you've extracted the, actually, the appendix on ethics. But there's also a section that I think is, is kind of important. And I also might consider doing, which talks about, It starts on page thirty of their big PDF called Section Two, Council Conduct. So it has to do with public meetings, practicing civility, honoring the role of the presiding officer, Demonstrate effective problem solving approaches, be respectful of other people's time, Private encounters, treat others as you would like to be treated, city council with con- conduct, Council conduct with city staff, right? Talking about professionalism and how to channel communications and these things. And, you know, to, to my way of thinking, adding that to what you've, you've put in would make a lot of sense to me. Because it really describes, right, what, how we, how we interact with each other and with the public. And, and then, yeah, with city staff. So that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and considering Some of the survey results we got specifically about how city staff use the council, I think that at least that part is definitely something we, we might want to include. So Rod, where, where is this?
I don't know, Katie, if you.
Katie's pulling it up, it's page, page thirty of the bigger document.
Yeah, it starts on page thirty, which is council conduct.
And I'll, I'll make, I'll make two comments. There is a section J in, in appendix A, which talks just sort of broadly about positive workplace environment. And we also have existing municipal code sections that, that address council communications with staff as well. So there's some things already.
Well, I'm not meaning to be redundant, right?
And, and I don't mean to be suggesting it shouldn't go here. I just wanted you to be aware of places where those issues are discussed already.
I think, so we already have the commission recommendations. And there are, plus, in addition to that, there is also commission council handbook. So I would prefer this ethics policy to be simpler. So that, because like the virgin A, I got comments that there are certain things there That's trying to say you should not hold strong opinions. Otherwise, you are, you will be perceived as this, perceived as that. So I feel If we are too specific, this will be used as for political attacks.
Where does it say you can't have strong opinions? I didn't see that.
I think one of the items, I, sorry, I didn't print it out. So I like the, the third one, that's simple and succinct. Because when you have something that's long, people are less likely to read it. And then, like the Palo Alto one, I in fact asked Palo Alto city council members, do they know about it? This council member who has been on the council for three years have no idea this even exists. So if you have something that's too long, It really, what's the point? I think ethics policy should be simple, succinct. And we all know what that means. Why do I have to bother explaining everything?
I mean, it's still only two pages, right? The Palo Alto, I mean, right, I mean, it's four here, but that's because you have the marked up red version. So I don't, I don't think this is too long. And I don't see, and I don't see anywhere where it says we're not allowed to have strong opinions. I mean, the whole point of us being up here is to have strong opinions.
I think that's probably under representing the city in advocacy. Where it states in the second sentence, by contrast, When city elected appointed officials and staff are presenting their individual opinions And positions on issues potentially relevant to the city, They must explicitly state they do not represent their body or the city and must not allow any inference that they do. So I mean, I, I think that's just an item on representations.
I will say that we, in the original circulated version, there was concern about section B on conduct of members. And, and we revised that, so you might want to direct your attention there to see if.
Well, that's really, I mean, you.
If it's still a concern or not.
You mean on, on the, what's on the projector here?
No, what they modified from Palo Alto.
No, I mean, but that's, that's just striking above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety For, in favor of, quote, respectful of others, recognizing that individuals can respectfully disagree with each other. I mean, that, that's not something that I was talking about with regard to the opinions being stifled. I mean, I, I think with regard to, you know, talking about What the positions are in a public forum, Anything having to do with kind of curbing one's, one's representation, that this is a Position of the city is, is something that speaks to whether, you know, you should, to a certain degree, you know, voice your opinion. But I mean, other than that, I'm not seeing that particular item on Palo Alto's draft. I mean, I guess it's not really Palo Alto's draft, we've already, we've already modified it.
So before we go any further, why don't we open up to the public comment? I only have two cards here. Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord. Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff.
Can we start the timer?
I'm not going to take that long.
No, okay. No, I can't start it anymore.
I prefer option A because looking through it, it jogs your memory. Oh, that's not something I should be doing. Or this is what, there are some things like gifts or that, that if you just read the general comments on, I think it's C, It's really vague. And, and A gives you examples. Now, you could do C and add A as examples. But I think some people need to be reminded that there's certain things that you just don't do. The other thing is There's nothing, it's a policy, like, like everything else, so does it mean nothing? Are there any procedures for addressing improper behavior that isn't appropriate? And also, I don't know if you do it here, but somewhere, I would like to see That ex-city council members and possibly key staff members Have a four-year moratorium for coming back and lobbying to the city. Anyway, thank you.
So thank you, um, so Madam City Attorney, is that something that's legal to do? To exclude former council members from lobbying the council?
Cities often adopt sort of detailed lobbying ordinances, which makes me think it's legal. I have not gone into what is and isn't within that.
No, I just wonder, and how many years could you, obviously you can't exclude somebody for twenty years, but maybe for two years. Yeah, I would like to look into that and we could amend this, you know, later on if we think.
Or it's often standalone ordinances to control lobbying and falls within that. So it, it's, it's, it's a sort of large process the city could undergo if you wish to.
Right, and it has, well, because it has kind of been a big issue in the city too. So, yeah, Peggy's point is well taken. I think we should do that. Okay, Jean Bedord.
Hi, my name is Jean Bedord, I am a Cupertino resident. I happen to echo Peggy's comments, both of them. I prefer option A. And it's very interesting to talk about, you know, triggering situat- knowing what the situations are. I remember being floored the first time I took a librarian out to lunch and I wanted, I was going to pay for it. And she said, no, I can't do that because you are quote unquote a potential vendor. Never dawned on me, in the business world, it's standard to take people out for lunch. But when you're dealing with, you know, public servants and elected officials, That is a fine line that you always need to think about. So I think it's, it's very important to have that detail in there that's in A. Secondly, you seem to have ignored the feedback from the commissions. They talk specifically about how will this be enforced? When is there inappropriate behavior? And that is not addressed in this. I think you need to think thoroughly about the implications of this and give it some more thought. Thank you.
Okay, so do any of the cities have standards for what happens when someone violates? How do you even determine when someone really violates? I mean, the council can always censure members, but We have not done that even with the most egregious behavior we've seen here in the past.
The only thing I can comment on is I know that, that the city has an anti, like an anti harassment policy. Or harassment in the workplace that might cover Undesirable behavior in the workplace or things where you can create a hostile work environment. But that's about all I've seen and that's pretty consistent from a couple of different cities that I've spoken to.
Right, and if we do, I mean, if we violate the Brown Act or other state laws, then there are consequences. there are consequences for that, regardless of, you know, what the city's policy is. So, okay, so more discussion?
So regarding the, so, so are we going with number A?
Well, no, it's up to, it's up to us. I mean, I prefer A.
The reason it's long, because, see, I, it takes a long time to read. So the decision, item D, decisions based on merit. So I think a lot of policy decisions are, the reason that we make a decision a lot of times are from accumulated knowledge of talking to residents, reading different reports. So they are, they may or may not be that individuals consider they are relevant. So what does that mean, based on merit? Merit, I do remember earlier, Virgin, it's of merit and the matter, and of the matter at hand, which might include relevant policy considerations, rather than under unrelated considerations. I think we make decisions based on our knowledge, and there, I don't think anyone would make a decision based on unrelated considerations. So I feel this is, what's the point of all this? What's, decisions based on?
I think what this is trying to address is that when commissioners and council members are focusing on a decision, they think, is this, for instance, take a development project, is this, is this a good development project or not? Rather than saying, do I like the person who's bringing it forward a lot? Do I have a grudge against them? Do I want to favor a competitor, and so I'm making a decision based on what's going to benefit them, rather than whether this project is good for the city or not? And so the merits just mean, considering the matter that's before you, what does it, does the city, interest of the city favor approving it, or denying it, or approving it with conditions, that sort of thing, and not thinking about unrelated considerations that don't really bear on whether it's a good project or not? That might be the simplest way for me to describe what this is trying to get at.
But whether a project is good or not is often an opinion, because people have different priorities, and.
Yes, and this is not trying to change people's opinions or priorities, just saying that they should relate to the project and not to other things.
So this is confusing, then, what exactly is merit?
Well, and I'm trying to just answer the question, and you're free to delete this or modify it, however you think.
I think one person's merits may be different than another person's merits, and that's fine, not, not everyone considers everything in an issue the same.
Yeah, but of course, you want to make decisions that consider the good, how, is that good for the city, right? So I think that's the base, that should be the base for the decision. But then, different people think different things are good for the city, for, at different times. So that's why this item is, to me, it's not clear. So what do you mean by unrelated? What's, what exactly is merit?
Just mentioned, like, an example is, oh, I don't like this person, so I'm going to vote against their project.
I know, but then whoever reads this, do they understand this statement?
I mean, these are guidelines, right? Like.
But you are making it specific. When it's specific? By just reading decisions based on merit? What does that mean?
Ah, I don't know, it's, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, that we're not basing our decisions on unrelated considerations.
I think the subjective nature of this, of this call, for a lot of these terms, is also indicative of the idea that the underlying intent of a code of ethics is to encourage people towards particular aspirational values and behavioral norms. And that's why it is very difficult, if not, if not impossible, because of the subjective nature of, you know, some of these, these terms, to make this into something that becomes punitive or sanctions oriented. I think that it is important for us to have a statement of our values encapsulated within a code of ethics, and if it indicates to the public and to, you know, each other, that we have, you know, particular, you know, modes of behavior that we'd like to encourage, then I am all for it. You know, that being said, you know, I think that we do have, we do have support for Attachment A. I think I can live with that and see how it goes. I mean, I'm not expecting this to turn into a situation where every meeting, we have people poring over this like it's some kind of, you know, statutory text, because the nature of this is, it's largely subjective in some of these, as you're pointing out. And so what I would do is, I would motion that we adopt the resolution that would authorize a code of ethics, and I would suggest that we choose the Attachment A option as that code.
So for item D, how about saying decisions for, decisions for the best interest of the city?
Again, that's, yeah, I would be fine with that language as well, but that's subjective. Your sense of what is in the best interest of the city is not always consistent with what everyone else thinks is the best interest.
Because I don't understand what exactly is merit.
Right. And what I think is a merit may be different from what you think is a merit.
I mean.
Not deciding it based on, you know, oh, you know, this person's my friend, so I'm gonna, I'm going to vote for this project regardless of whether it's good or bad.
But you're, you are putting a policy, decisions based on merit, and then you are saying this merit is, could be anything, then that may make this item.
Right, it could be anything, you're exactly right.
That makes this item confusing.
No, it's intent, I don't think it's confusing, I think it's.
Because if you say for the best interest.
It's intentionally vague.
For the best interest of the city, then it's clear, everyone has different view of the interest. But merit usually is objective. It's harder to say you have different view of merit. Merit is usually something you can grade. It's objective.
So it's not hard, it's not hard for what's in the best interest of the city as well? That's totally subjective as well.
Well, I, you know.
It is subjective, but merit is.
Yeah, if we can get to agreement by changing that, I'm fine.
Exactly. If we can, you know, if we can change, quote, on the merits of the matter at hand, to based upon the best interests of the city, capital C, then I would be happy to withdraw my previous motion based on Attachment A, and resubmit it based upon that modification to Point D.
Great, I would second that.
Would you be open to including some of this other language from the body of the Palo Alto document?
I think it's redundant.
I think we've made it complicated enough, you know, based upon the, the addition of the language and specificity from the values oriented one. I actually like the values oriented one, because I think that it's, it's simple, it's easy to absorb, and you're not going to lead the city down a path where people might be pointing the finger at each other based upon an ethics statement, which is by nature, by nature, subjective in a lot of ways.
Me, too.
But, so I like Attachment A as it stands right now. If we do see a need for it in another year, perhaps, to, to add that, you know, section that you're talking about, I'd be happy to visit it at that point.
So you're proposing, so can you restate your motion, so I'm clear?
I'm moving that we adopt Resolution Number 20-011, with the code of ethics proposed in Attachment A, with the modification that Point D, decisions based on merit, read, city elected appointed officials and staff, base their decisions upon, and Councilmember Chow helped me, upon the best interests of the city, capital C, comma, which might include relevant policy considerations, rather than on unrelated considerations.
So the merits of the matter at hand for the benefit of the city?
Change to, okay, on the merits of the matter at hand, changes to upon the best interests of the city.
Upon, you mean?
Base their decisions.
In the best interests of the city, maybe?
Base their decisions upon the best interests of the city.
So it should be make their decisions, right? Not base, make their decisions for the best interest of the city. Right, in the best interest of the city.
Okay, make their decisions in the best interests of the city.
Are you opening to keeping merits in?
I think that's what Councilmember Chow's issue is.
She wanted to get rid of the word merits.
What's the issue with?
Because I think merit is something, I'm unclear what that is. And this feels something, it's objective, but limited to whatever is presented in front of us. But a lot of times, our policy decisions are, not all information is included in the staff report.
Okay, I'm, I'll read this again. So, so Point D, city elected appointed officials and staff make their decisions in the best interests of the city, comma, which might include relevant policy considerations, comma, rather than on unrelated considerations. So that's my, my motion. I believe the mayor seconded it.
Right, so can we vote?
Okay.
Yes.
Yay.
Motion carries comfortably absent.
Okay, we are on to item sixteen. Adopt updated community funding policy and approve community funding grant cap of $20,000 per applicant per year staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and council members. Tony Owase Anderson, management analyst, here to present to you tonight the updated community funding policy. The community funding program assists nonprofits with funding, with funding for programs, projects, or events that benefit the Cupertino community. It's important to note that fee waivers are not included as part of the community funding policy, as they are treated separately. The community funding policy had a number of policy revisions over the years. In fiscal year 2013, the first policy was adopted by council, and this included input from the Parks and Recreation Commission. In fiscal year 2016, the first revision was made to the community funding policy, adopted by council, and this curves as our, this serves as our current policy. In June of 2018, at the final budget adoption hearing, council directed staff to update the community funding program. Some of these updates include council recommending that the Parks and Recreation Commission review all applications and provide a funding recommendation to council. It also includes a series of follow-up questions that the council had for the applicants at that time. These follow-up questions were used to create a more robust application form. Additionally, staff had also researched best practices in other agencies. In June of 2019, at the final budget adoption hearing, all of these changes were incorporated into the policy, and it also included recommendations from the Parks and Recreation Commission to create the second revision of the community funding policy. At this meeting, at the final budget adoption, council had requested that the policy be brought back at a future date as a separate item for further review and consideration. This here provides a summary of the items that are listed in our current community funding policy. The updated policy includes all of the items that are listed here in the current policy, in addition to the items that are listed here on the right column. The updated policy has a number of items, but I will be covering the items that are in bold here. So the top three bolded items are recommendations by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The $20,000 funding cap is a recommendation so that the, there is a maximum amount that the applicants can apply for. Another recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Commission is to establish two funding categories, and these categories will be for new applicants and past recipients. There's also recommendation to have a four-tiered funding structure, and what this would do is, it would group applicants by similar dollar amounts requested. And these recommendations were made to assist the commission in further reviewing all of the grant applications. Towards the bottom, you know, there are two other bulleted, two other bolded items. These are based on recommendations from researching best practices in other agencies, as well as responding to requests from past council. Those are requiring to submit a report on actual expenses, and also, if requested, to provide full financial statements for the organization. The next steps involved in the process, the grant applications are going to be available on February 1st, and they will be due on March 1st. And this is the recommendation for you tonight. Staff is available for any questions you may have.
So I have a question. So what happened last year where West Valley Community Services came back, I guess, in December, asking for money, and it kind of put us in a bad situation, I thought? Because really, it seems like, based on these recommendations, they should not have been able to do that.
Right.
That is correct.
And yet, we were kind of put into the position, well, this is a worthy cause, we should support it, but really, we should, you know, be abiding by this. So is there something here that would prevent that kind of thing from happening again?
Yes, there is a section in the policy, and I can read what that says. Basically, it's stating that any, any requests that are brought to council, like, say, as an individual request, would have to be forwarded to the administrative, administrative services department for, to go through the normal process of the grant application process.
So that did not happen last year?
That did not happen.
All right, yeah, this is great, then. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Wait, so we actually have this community grant, usually for community events, but there is another community block program. there is another community block program that's for social services, right?
Yes.
So I think the additional funding for the, it's more like for social services, and that which happened in December, those were for like providing?
The policy currently doesn't limit if it's-
Those are not for events.
If it's human services or just cultural events, so they could apply, I believe, under both the current policy. Just listed it's to funding local nonprofit organizations in the area of social services, fine arts, and other programs for the general public.
Yeah, what I meant was the request by West Valley Community Services in December that could fall under this community grant, but also fall under the community block grant, which is for social services?
I'm not familiar with the community block grant, so it's not a question I, I could, I don't know if you're familiar with them, Tony.
This is money coming from the federal government, right, that we-
Right.
Yeah.
This is not CBG.
In a, in a very well-defined process.
No, this, yeah, and the program that was being asked for support was a program that is run by the local nonprofit in order to, I think, provide gifts to economically disadvantaged families.
Yeah, so wouldn't that-
I don't, I don't believe that type of, I don't believe that type of program qualifies for what you're describing as the-
Right, it does not.
The block grant.
I, I don't think that's a community development block grant type of program.
And, you know, don't get me wrong, I think it was a worthwhile thing that we did, but I think it's not really fair to all the other community groups that, you know, might have equally worthwhile causes that they would want additional funding for.
What I mean is here, right now, we are putting a cap of twenty thousand for-
Correct.
An organization. It's not for a program, because we are asking them to combine everything under one application. So that means for, like, West Valley Community Services, they actually have, they actually have multiple programs, and they can get at most twenty thousand.
So question, does, okay, so under this particular program, the community funding policy, the community funding grant program, has WVCS applied for those funds in the past? And have they applied for more than twenty thousand dollars? Or, or for that matter, any organization?
Anybody, yeah.
Has any organization applied for or received more than twenty thousand dollars?
I believe the only one, and I'm doing this off of memory, take a little bit of research to dig down to that level of detail for the last few years, but I believe it was KMVT that applied for forty-five thousand-
I see.
-one year, and that's the only one that I can think of in recent memory that was above that twenty thousand dollar.
And KMVT is the, the TV programming that we provide, and that's run by some of the retired community members, right?
Yes, I believe so.
For, for the better part.
Is that the one in Mountain View, or?
Yes, it's a studio in Mountain View.
Right, right, I've been there before, okay.
Okay, so that's the only one that you can think of off the top of your head, and with-
I, I don't think we made that big a grant, did we?
I can't recall.
Well, it hardly matters.
Working off of memory, but I know there was one that was over that amount.
Right, and that's not a recurring annual request?
Yeah, they had a capital campaign to upgrade HD.
Right.
And however, like, for example, Rotary Club, I remember that they are funded under this community grant, but also they got grant for like waiver of facility use and different other waivers, so they are not all counted together.
No, those are, they're separate as-
Facility is separate.
Yeah, this is specifically just for this type of, of funding request would be the twenty thousand dollar cap.
That means in addition to their facility waiver, they can, they get to ask for other cash, shouldn't they all be considered together? I think we should require them, if they are applying for funding under this, they should disclose what other fund, what other waiver or funding the city is providing to the same event.
In the, in the current grant application, there is a question that asks if you receive any other in-kind support from the city.
Oh, okay, great.
So we'll be able to tell what, whether funding they're receiving.
Okay, we had one-
I don't remember reading that in the past application, so that's a new addition.
Okay, so I, I just got this note, say, the KMVT was for an equipment upgrade, which I think someone else mentioned, it was to upgrade to HDTV?
Yeah.
So that was, that was a one-time thing, I mean, I don't remember when it was, I don't think I was here at that time.
Five years ago.
And I, I believe that Vice Mayor Paul had a second question that we didn't answer is whether West Valley Community Services applied for and got the twenty thousand dollars from last year? And the answer is correct, yes?
Yes, West Valley Community Services did apply for a grant, and they did receive twenty thousand dollars, it was for a pantry overhang.
Right, yeah, I recall that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
So-
And Historic Society, did they request also twenty thousand?
No.
You baseline their budget into the budget for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, so that's going to be ongoing? So that will be separate from this? Okay.
And frankly, why I don't understand, I mean, we wouldn't have to do it that way, they're another nonprofit to me.
And so what-
Makes sense that we're baselining any of these nonprofits on government funds.
And also what's our, so what they need to provide for the twenty-five thousand dollar grant? Do they, are they required to provide line item expense?
Who are you referring to?
So Historic Society.
No, but they don't have the line, they don't have the, they, right, they, how, how are we funding them, it's in the budget, right, it's not?
Yeah, I have a correction, it's a, it's a twenty thousand, and they got it through a budget, so they don't have a grant that they need to report on or justify.
Right, but we can decide each year whether we should-
Sure.
Put that in the budget-
Sure.
Again, and maybe it's more appropriate for them to apply-
Yeah, I, I-
Their community funding.
I really think that's appropriate.
You can make that decision year to year, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Our Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission is present and-
Okay.
Okay.
To answer any questions you may have.
Oh, okay, so one thing I wondered about, the line admission to or participation in the event must be free of charge, well, a lot of these fundings are not for specific events.
The requirement is for one-time project, right?
Yeah, the policy specifically says it should be used for a one-time project, not ongoing operational cost.
Right, but I'm talking about the admission, admission to or participation in the event. So if we gave that money to West Valley for their gift program, does that really, you know, is this line really relevant to something like that?
Yeah, I think you could say if, an event, if relevant, right?
Right, yeah, something like that.
There'll be some that won't be events.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I think we, I would like to remove that requirement that the event has to be free, because for example, when the Lions Club did the bike ride, there is significant cost, so it's not possible to offer it completely free, and also a lot of times, there is, when you charge some moderate amount, like fifteen dollars, it encourages participation. People, a lot of times people don't appreciate something that's completely free.
But this already says unless approved by Parks and Recreation Commission, so the Parks and Recreation Commission could make that decision.
Oh, so I mean, when they grant, when they, then that means in the application, they probably should specify.
Right, yeah, I think it has to say that in the application, that hey, you know-
If they are going to charge entrance fee, it should be specified in the application. Maybe the application should make that clear, that way when the Parks and Rec approve this funding, that means they approve charging of entrance fee.
Right, yeah, that, I guess that should be in the application, it doesn't have to be in here, but in the application. Okay, so we, um-
Is there a comment?
So somebody wanted to speak? Oh, okay. Okay, welcome, Nisha.
Hi.
So you're speaking on your own behalf, or as part of the Parks and Rec?
As Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission today, and happy to answer any other questions you have. Thank you so much for taking the time to look this over, we're really excited to start the process again come February, so it's very essential that we get this, get this settled tonight so we can have the new process for the next set of community events. The two things I wanted to quickly address is first, the, the free events part, it's just, it's, this is money that's meant for the community, and so we just want to make sure that it's not, an organization doesn't come in, take the money, and then put up a paywall for other citizens. It doesn't mean that people can't charge five dollars, it just means they have to tell us that they do, and we want that to be disclosed to us before they get that money and not just get ten thousand dollars from us and then say, oh, just kidding, you know, you're senior citizens, we're now going to charge them a hundred dollars to come to this event. So we want to just make sure that there's that kind of transparency. And then there was a question in the beginning about the Historic Society and why they were not going to be included in this, that was actually a push from the, all members of the commission, because the Historic Society is considered to be an integral part of the city of Cupertino, and what that provides is beyond a potential not, potentially not being funded through these community grants, it also opens up our ability to fund other organizations, which we would love more funding, to be able to fund more community organizations and nonprofits, but just wanted to, to point those two things out. If you guys have any additional questions, this was a very long agenda item for us, because we were all very excited about it, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on why it's structured this way, or why specific things were added in. Thank you.
I have a suggestion that might get a little bit at what council member Chow's talking about and what kind of solved your problem is, you could have like a split charge, right, so it's free for residents, but there's a charge for non-residents, because we have a lot of like bike rides and things that other people come and participate in, even though we're hosting it and all that, so it might be something for the commission to consider.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes sense that for, they should include their plan of how much they charge in the application, and, yeah, so that. And I do have a question regarding the recommendation of having two funding categories, what's the purpose of that? Are you going to have different, allocate a certain amount for category one, which the two funding categories are for past recipient and new recipient, right? So are, are, do you guys envision to have a certain amount for past recipient and a certain total amount for the new ones?
We wanted to keep a certain level of flexibility, just because some years, they, there aren't that many new applicants, and some years there are more new applicants than past applicants, but the reason we wanted to call that out specifically is that we wanted to give opportunity to organizations that were younger or newer or serving a new part of the city or new residents that might not have been served before, and so we wanted to make sure that we were flagging those applications as, okay, we are making sure that we are looking at new applicants in one group and past applicants in the other group, and also making sure that it's not a past applicant group that's getting repetitive funding for something that might not have as much impact, and we become kind of part of their operating costs, which is another bullet point on this, so that's why we have two sections. We didn't want to mandate, you know, thirty percent here and seventy percent there, just because we don't know who's going to be applying, but we did want to make sure that was a factor in our decision-making as we present it to you guys when we're done.
Oh, okay, so I, that's good, because I would, I would like to favor new, newer organizations, so that the city is kind of providing seed funding for new events, and for well-established events who might have well-established donor base, they don't need as much funding from the city because they likely have funding from other private sources.
And one of the questions, one of the sections of the application does ask applicants to list who they've reached out to, who are their additional funders, if they're getting funding from the city, and if they're getting other funding from other partners, and so that's one of the things we'll take into consideration as well, so a new organization can also get a chance, because that's kind of the goal, is to also make sure we're giving them an opportunity.
So can you explain the tiered structure here that you've got? Are you going to like divide up the grants, the grant applications by the dollar amount, or would you just take them all and give them what you think you could afford, even if it wasn't as much as they requested? Presumably you wouldn't give them more than they requested.
No, we would not give them more than they requested. So the reason that we wanted to divide it into four categories was for a couple of reasons. The first is that it's kind of almost comparing, you know, apples to cars. Some organizations only needed a hundred and fifty dollars to make their event function, they just wanted a hundred and fifty dollars to get origami paper, and then other organizations were looking at like huge infrastructural changes to big buildings, and so to, to kind of put them, pit them against each other didn't quite make sense to us, because one is, one can impact an entire event, and one might be a piece of something that's much bigger, so we wanted to make sure that we were categorizing them with other things that would have the same percentage of impact. And then the other, the other goal with breaking it down into four categories was to make sure that we were spreading the type of impact that we had out, so like making sure that if there is an infrastructure change we need to make, then we can do that, or, you know, providing twenty thousand dollars for an overhang that is a one-time cost, it's very expensive, but it's a one-time high cost, we're willing to make that because we know that's actually going to last several more years after this, and so the ROI is much higher for something big like that, but we want to make sure we're also still funding the smaller, the smaller players.
So do you think that in some cases, there should be a limit to the number of years the same organization can receive a grant? Because it seems to me like there's some that keep coming back every year for a grant and for, for things that really maybe should be self-sustaining after, you know, three or four years.
I wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of the commission on that particular question, we did not-
You didn't consider that?
I mean, the Historic Society was one such that we encouraged to become a part of the budget, because we felt like it was a key community and city, city organization, and should contribute to the history, the preservation of history for the, for the city. So that is one that was coming back repetitively year after year, but we wanted to see it sustain longer than that, but they don't have the means to sustain themselves entirely, so that's just one example.
So, and want to clarify, so the current application or revised include, they should disclose the in-kind donations from the city, but not in-kind donations from other organizations? But then do, do they also disclose all the donations from other organizations, so that we can tell they are actually self-sustaining, and funding to them is not as essential for that activity to happen? Can, do they disclose that right now in the application?
Uh, yes.
Other external-
In the-
Donations?
Yes, in the current-
Or funding, yeah.
In the current policy, or in the current application, we do request information about in-kind support from the city as well as from outside organizations.
Do, do we, do they have dollar amount, or they just list the organization? Because I don't remember reading that section.
Specifically what we're asking is, does your organization anticipate receiving additional financial or in-kind support from the city of Cupertino outside of community funding grants for this type of program or event? And then we also have, if your organization has ever received in-kind from the city to provide this as well, will you collaborate with other organizations? And then if you are multi- jurisdictional, describe any funding requested from other agencies, organizations in regards to this program, project, or event, indicate whether that grant funding was denied, or is still granted, or is still pending.
So they only need to say they got grant in-kind donation from the city, but not specific dollar amount? I remember seeing that in the budget, but I don't remember when you're reading the application that dollar amount is specified, because I thought that's important for the commission to know when making decisions, right?
It does say, what it says is, please describe-
It does say, what it says is, please describe this support. And, and that's where they would be adding the dollar amount in that section.
So we will add up dollar amount. And so from what you read, also it doesn't include donations. For example, like Fall Festival, I remember they have like 20 or more different donations, private donations. So, I mean, how do we know if this event is self-sustaining? So the application only asks for inter-jurisdictional funding, but not private donations?
I believe it does have a line that includes any organization support and that does include private organizations.
Agencies or organizations.
But no dollar amount, right?
It says, indicate, well, let's see, multi-jurisdictional, any funding requested. So they have to tell us the funding that was requested from these other organizations in regards to this program, project, or event.
Yeah, the question, what I meant, I guess, for the previous year, because for us to know if they are self-sustaining, I, we would need to know for the previous year, they got city funding from the city and what other donations they have gotten for, for the entire event. Then we know, we can judge whether the donation from the city is essential for that event, right? So if we, doesn't look like we have that information right now. So can we ask for that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we did add a section that said that once they've received community funding, they actually do have to come back and provide a report in terms of how that funding was used and other funding from their organization. So that was actually one of the things that the commission was very interested in. We wanted to figure out if there's some way that we could have metrics on our, essentially, and we're looking at it as an investment. And so I believe that that was added. I think that's like the second or second to last or the last bullet point in the current, in the updated changes slide.
I think it says there is submit report on actual expenses, but doesn't include other funding. So it doesn't include, disclose other funding you received the last, in...
Because the application asked them to submit it, when they submit the application, what other funding they're either in the, they requested, has been granted or been denied. So when they report back, our interest is really, so we get that information upfront. Once it's awarded, the interest is really how they spent the money that we awarded them.
Yeah. What I mean is, for those past recipients, what kind of information we should request from them? So we should request the actual expenses?
Yeah, so questions?
Plus, plus the total amount of donation.
The application asked if they did provide, they were provided with grant funding last year to provide in the number of, in the categories, admin staff, materials, equipment, entertainment, room venue, other professional services, other, how they spent those dollars, who was served by the grant, the number individuals, number of Cupertino residents, any particular community groups, was the program project available to the entire community or public? Was there a fee or a charge? And what outreach message did your organization use to promote the event?
So that's for the previous year. Good. So in the current year application, do I ask them to submit an expected budget?
Yes.
So that's included, right?
Darcy, you have any questions?
I, I don't, but I, I just would like to point out that we do have a suggested bullet point in the policy that states, quote, "If requested, recipients must provide full financial statements for the organization," end quote. So I, I think this is a very well considered set of recommendations and, you know, a policy document. I very much appreciate the Chair of our Parks and Rec Commission, Anisha, you got me out tonight, it's past 11 now. And it is a good set of, you know, recommendations from your commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to just make a motion, we can discuss.
One more question, okay.
I'd like to make a motion. I motion that we adopt the updated community funding policy and approve the community funding grant cap of $20,000 per applicant per year.
All right, I'll second.
Okay. So one more question. One, one of the requirement is experienced staff to manage project. Since we are trying to encourage new organizations, right? So they might not have experienced staff, what would be our minimum requirement for experienced staff?
So I think generally in this category, what we're looking for is they have the, enough staff with enough experience to carry out the project that they're requesting the dollars for. So if they're putting on, say, a huge festival and they're requesting $15,000, but they have nobody that's ever put on a festival before, to me, I would, I would think Parks and Rec would consider that application and say, well, I don't know if they can actually put on this event. It's also important to note, the recipients are invited to come to the Parks and Rec Commission to present their items as well. And at that point, the Parks and Rec Commission could also ask that information. I see here in your application that you don't have anybody with experience. Can you speak to us a little bit more about why you think you'd be able to put on this event? So it's, from our perspective, when we look at it at admin services, we're making sure they're meeting all the criteria. When it goes to Parks and Recreation, they're going to bet out some of those other questions a little bit better to make sure they're putting the dollars, that they're going to request council adopt in the right hands of folks that can carry out the projects that they're requesting.
Because what I mean is for new organizations, likely everyone is a volunteer. So they, they won't be, they won't have paid staff. So this, I'm, it's unclear, are we expecting paid staff to manage their finance? That's not what we are expecting.
This doesn't say paid staff anywhere.
I don't think volunteer precludes people that have expertise.
Right. You could say has the experience or ability or experience or expertise to implement and manage, so.
Yeah, I mean, I also, I saw that word in my mind and I thought, well, okay, yes, staff could be, they're not necessarily paid, right, so.
So they are not necessarily paid staff. So staff or volunteer?
Yeah, it doesn't specifically call out paid staff, it just demonstrate that the staff implementing and managing the program project have adequate experience.
So they just need to provide some background experience, okay?
So for example, we had somebody who wanted to create a program to help seniors learn more about technology. That person had, it was a new organization, that person had extensive tech IT help experience. And so that would be a person that we would consider, okay, they have enough expertise in the kind of program they're starting, they want to start, to make that actually fruitful. So we just want to make sure it's not like, we're not giving $15,000 to one person who's never done anything with that industry or that kind of nonprofit before.
Required to include their team members so that, like you said, we, we won't be giving grant for one person. But the application right now doesn't require them to list the team members, right?
It's an organization.
It's the organization, but in the application.
It could be an organization of one member.
Yeah, so it doesn't specifically request that they list all of their staff, it just shows demonstrate that you have a staff that can implement it. So they can very easily list one staff member with a lot of, you know, of experience. So it's really, I think we wrote this to be kind of vague because we didn't, what if you only have one staff? So we wanted, for them to tell us the story about why they thought they had the qualified staff, whether that's paid or volunteer to put on the event that they're asking for.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think we can vote.
I have, I have one comment here. I wanted to circle back and I see that there's a chart, there's a question here and it says, was there a charger fee for the program, project, or event? So we do have it in the application that asks if you charge a fee.
Okay, thank you.
The motion carries with Willie absent.
Yay, thank you.
Wow. Okay.
Can we please, can the city manager please post, broadcast that this grant opportunity is available? Because not many people in the community used to know about it.
Well, that's part of the recommendations that we do a very strong push through various channels and social media, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're on to number 17, approve the First Amendment to the Employment Agreement for the city manager. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Sharf, City Councilmembers, Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. This evening, we're asking you to consider to approve the First Amendment to the Employment Contract for the city manager. The city council conducted an evaluation, six-month evaluation of the city manager per the contract. Subsequent to that evaluation, negotiations occurred. And before you this evening, in the amendment is a request to grant a one-time bonus of $19,000 and to advance the leave accruals for one year, equivalent to 120 hours, to create a bank on 1/21/2020. And available, should you have any questions?
So the bank, the granting of vacation time on January 1st, what happens when an employee leaves before they've earned all that vacation? Is it just, the city loses that or it's, how does that work?
So if they, I want to make sure I'm understanding the question.
Right, let's say on January 1st, I get 120 hours of vacation to use during the year, but in March, I've used all 120 hours and then I say, I'm quitting the city.
So any amount that wouldn't have been accrued to that date, we generally figure out what that would have been and any amount, or sorry, make sure, I don't think I'm understanding the question correctly as I started to answer it.
I think you are.
Okay. So if, if the employee were to use up the full bank prior to earning, accruing those, we would generally go back and say, you know, this is kind of a deficit, this is what you would have earned. But I'm going to look at the city attorney to just make sure, validating the way the language is written in the contract, if that would still be in effect.
Yeah, my understanding is that when we looked into this, that the employee would need to repay back if they had taken vacation that they wouldn't have, actually have earned by the time they leave the city employment.
And so that's generally going to be done through the final check. If there isn't sufficient funds in the final check, the city would then bill the employee for those hours.
Great, okay. And so, Darcy and I did negotiate this with the city manager, so I don't think we have any other questions.
And you did that on behalf of the council?
Yes.
Informing the councils.
Right, yeah, we were given criteria and...
And you drove a hard bargain.
Well, maybe not hard enough, but we did the best we could. And I think the city manager has demonstrated her competence over these past six months. And, you know, and we did talk about, should it be a, a raise in salary or should be a one-time bonus? And we thought the one-time bonus was more appropriate and we would get on the regular schedule with all the other employees of doing the evaluations and salary increases, if any, at that same time of year.
Are there any comments from the public on this?
No.
Well, seeing none, I'd like to move that we adopt draft, draft resolution number 20-012, approving the First Amendment to Employment Agreement for city manager and authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment.
Second?
Okay, vote.
The motion carries with Willie absent.
Great. We are on to the appointment of council and committee assignments. So this is something, this is one of the few things that the mayor actually does. You know, otherwise they don't have a lot more power or authority. And I know no one is ever happy and there are some committee and commission assignments that are more desirable than others. And not everyone, I think, wasn't there a song, "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometime, you get what you need?" So each person, well, each council member was supposed to submit their requests of what they wanted and four out of five did. And I tried to give everybody what they wanted and distribute the less desirable things so everyone got some of each. The one thing I thought was appropriate for the mayor to take, and since Councilmember Sinks will be termed out, I thought that someone should start taking over cities association and come up to speed on that. So, so that's why I took that, even though Councilman Sinks requested it. If anybody wants to trade now or whatever before we approve this, that's, that's fine, or objects to something they've been assigned. There are some, there's one here that's kind of new. It hasn't actually happened yet. It's the North Valley mayors and city managers, which, we have West Valley now, which is Saratoga, Montisarino, Los Gatos, and Campbell and Cupertino. But we, we really think we have more in common with more Sunnyvale and Los Altos and Palo Alto. So we may, we're going to try to start a North Valley equivalent. So are there any comments or complaints or?
I'd like to move that we approve the council committee assignments as drafted.
Second?
Okay, vote.
The motion carries with Willie absent.
Oh shoot, Willie's absent, we could have given him some more stuff before.
Yeah, he could have gotten airplane noise.
So, just to be clear, airplane noise is something, I've been the primary, although it's always the same day as the West Valley mayor's meeting, so I have to rush over there. Now, we only voted, I think in October, to extend the funding for six months and then to determine if it's worth spending the money to continue it after that. And, because I know some other cities are questioning whether we should continue doing it or not. And so we'll decide that probably in a few months, whether that's going to continue at all. So now we're back to council and staff comments and future agenda items. There's no more rural communications, so we can move on to that. It's only 11:15. So are we actually ahead, ahead of schedule? Wow. Okay. Okay, so Councilmember Sinks, do you want to report on anything?
I, well, is this where we make requests?
Right. This is where, for, you know, new agenda items?
I, I know that there are some development projects up for consideration this year. One that didn't happen tonight, as an example. I think, given the success of our, our Via Shuttle program and with the hope that SR85PAB will be making a specific recommendation to the VTA Board, hopefully in the first quarter, that we schedule time to revise something that, I don't know how many of you are aware of, but we have something called our transit, Transportation Impact Fee. And right now, that, the basis for that fee is on projects that were well-defined and known at the time we first approved it. Since then, it's, you know, become apparent that the projects that we have, or the traffic's gotten a lot worse. And we have projects that are, are beginning to now mature to the point where I think we could make a credible case that funding for them could be added to the, the fee that we, we charge for this purpose. So I would like to recommend we take a careful look at our calendar of approvals and also, you know, when we think these things are mature enough to be added and, and schedule this on some future meeting. Because transportation isn't going away, our transportation demands aren't going away, and we clearly just don't have enough money to make.
I'll second that request.
Right, yeah, I agree with that. We don't need a third, but do we need a nexus, a new nexus study for that? If we're trying to...
Your city's attorney's office will look into what the process would be.
So this is like three or four years ago, right? And we've, we've come a long ways, I think, on some of these efforts since.
The last one was approved when 2015, but...
I don't remember, honestly. But, anyway, it's called the Transportation Impact Fee.
Okay. So in addition to that...
Thank you.
In addition to that, I, I hope that we also consider Infrastructure Impact Fee. Palo Alto has this so that they can fund library expansion of senior center and for them, it's fire station and other infrastructures. So also like, I think, yes, so, so any of So also, like, um, I think, um, yes, so, so any of the renovation of buildings, they, they include all this. So they, they, they would do a, make a list of all the potential projects, and then prioritize, and also do a nexus study on this.
So, are we allowed to, that's not something that's like limited to charter cities, is it?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Because, yeah-
It would be a development impact fee, so you'd have to show that, you'd have to impose it on projects that are bringing in, um, probably residential, uh, users who create demands for those services.
Right, separate from park impact and, yeah, I mean, library impact, that's legitimate.
Community center, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and another thing I'd like to propose, I don't have any, uh, community meetings to report. So, another thing that was mentioned earlier was, uh, we need to clarify what exactly is retail use, especially when it's applied to ground floor retail that justifies, uh, increasing of building height from forty-five to sixty feet. So, yeah, in the past, it hasn't been clarified, but then we already have those uses, and, and maybe there should be conditional use permit.
To put that on, so I think that's already-
So even for the ones that's already built, can we still apply condi-, um, additional requirement for the conditional use permits for future, uh, business to, to go into that space?
Have to look into that.
Right, or, or the one that the resident mentioned where they said it was going to be retail, but it's either empty or, um, restricted.
Yeah, the one the resident mentioned, the empty one, we were told a retailer was going in there, and then something must have fallen through, but we're, we're checking in on all those details.
Yeah, or like the restaurants that's supposed to be under Hyatt Hotel, but then it's not really a restaurant right now.
Yeah, I know, there, there's been other projects in, in the past, and the property owner will say, "Well, I can't rent it out," because they never really wanted to do mixed use, but they were kind of forced into it, knowing that it would be difficult. But my feeling is, they made the money, they knew they were going to make the money on, um, residential, and it's almost like they should have known, "I'm going to have to rent this out at a loss" because, to rent it at all, rather than just leave it empty, which is even more of a loss.
So, and also, I think, along similar line, I hope we clarify what exactly is the incubator space? And, and for the existing space that's in Main Street, right now, there is no specific, um, requirement for any business going in. So, we should at least have some requirement for the future ones. And I know that, at the time, it was on the council agenda before, and then we were unwilling to proceed because we don't want to encourage retail space to be converted to incubator space. However, since we already have existing ones in the city, we do need to clarify what that, what's permitted under this incubator space. As I understand, in Los Gatos, they actually have conditional use permit for their downtown area for restaurants. They cannot by default put a restaurant in. They need to apply so, so that the city have control on where they are located, so they are, um, there is a good mix of different type of retail and restaurant. So that's something we should consider. Another thing is something Rhoda mentioned quite a few times already, that our energy efficient building code lacks behind other cities. And I hope that we take steps to improve that. But since we have adopted, uh, all-electric buildings, we need to have, uh, energy-efficient buildings so that the cost of operating these electric buildings is, uh, can be controlled. Especially for, I think, BMR housing, when this electric bills might be, um, yeah, an impact.
Right, yeah, I think we should look into copying other cities, or copying, or, you know, using theirs as a basis, because it is true, uh, someone may build something as cheaply as possible because they're, they're not going to be the ones that end up paying the energy costs. We really want to move the opposite direction, where even though they're not paying the energy costs, it should still be energy-efficient. So I would agree with council member Chow that we should definitely put this on the work plan for next year.
And another item I mentioned to Deb, uh, in an email-
Next year or this year?
For-
Well, when we adopt the work plan for-
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I hope that we, uh, review our BMR menu, because as we have seen, when we, when the nexus study was done for the BMR mitigation fee, it was based on the understanding that, um, BMR units are comparable in size to market rate units. And then we decide, okay, fifteen percent is a reasonable amount. However, we have seen projects that take exception, so they would not have to provide BMR units that's comparable in size with market rate. So in, so as a result, the total square footage of BMR units is not fifteen percent of the entire housing, uh, occupied area. It's often like five percent. And if, for a project that has two bedrooms, three bedrooms, a lot of times, they only provide one studio or one bedroom for BMRs.
So you're talking about changing the basis by which we calculate the fifteen percent from units to square footage?
Possibly square footage, or possibly number of bedrooms instead of, of just units.
Okay.
So that we encourage more family-oriented.
I get what you're trying to get to. I also think that, um, we'll look at it, of course, but, uh, just a cautionary phrase about departing from industry standards and industry practice out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, stretching it, I don't have a problem with, but, you know, we'll look at all these other options. Sometimes, sometimes it doesn't pay to be a leader in certain areas.
I know, but I think, I, um, so right now Cupertino doesn't specify the size of unit. We just say how many units, right? I think Lisa often speak about that. We never specify, how big is the unit? A unit could be four thousand square feet, it could be four hundred square feet. So, I think there are other cities who do specify, like, the average size should be the same.
I understand your point.
So I want to further clarify, if they are-
Point taken.
All right, we got it. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, I will go next, so, let's see, on January, oh, going back to December, I attended the menorah lighting at Cali Mill Plaza. I think, who else was there, were you there? Darcy was there, uh, always a fun event. On the tenth of January, I attended a event at the Plug and Play Tech Center in Sunnyvale with, um, some mayors from Korea. We listened to the pitches of a bunch of startups. Uh, it was all about smart city, so a lot of it was IOT. So that, that was educational. On the sixteenth, I went to a meeting with our, uh, tick commish-, some tick commissioners, and our, um, and Bill, Bill Mitchell, our CTO, and that was a meeting with Microsoft, again, to discuss IOT and smart city, because we are definitely moving in that direction to try to, uh, get something moving with 5G and smart city. In terms of future, oh, I also attended the, I officiated at the Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors installation, um, last week, can't remember which day. So, one thing I would like to consider, um, we have such an issue with transportation in our city, and I think I, I would propose that we expand our bicycle pedestrian commission into bicycle pedestrian and transportation, since they're also interrelated. We have a lot of initiatives we can do to try to encourage alternative transportation. And I would also want to expand the number of commissioners, probably from five to seven, given the additional workload that, that would be necessary in such a commission. I have talked to, um, one, one commissioner, I can't talk to very many, because of the Brown Act. I, I talked to one commissioner about this, and, um, that person thought that was a good idea, so we can bring that forward, um, uh, in the near future. Uh, I think that's, I think that's all I have.
I believe you can talk to all commissioners that's on the bike path commission without violating Brown Act, because you are not on the commission.
Is that true? I-
Is, you just can't facilitate a, a discussion or a decision amongst them?
Fine, all right, I'll run out and talk to everybody.
I, I'm supportive of this idea. I have to say, you know, sometimes, right? It, we're, we talk about these transit things, and it's so far away, and it's so hard, and it just takes years. I think we need more conversation in the city, uh, on what, what we're trying to get done, and, and have more minds in the game. And, um, I think it's a good idea to, to, uh, expand the scope here, because, uh, these things are, are things that endure. Some of our commissioners will end up being council members, and I think we need to propagate the knowledge of, of what we've been done and pushing for, to a wider, wider audience of people that really are engaged and concerned with the city.
We have no shortage of volunteers.
Right, thank you.
So, actually, last year, I proposed, uh, transportation commission, but also, but I was thinking it as, it as a separate commission, because I think the expertise of knowledge is different. And then also, community engagement commission, that might be in addition to the, uh, expanding the library commission. But, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe the proper item will be, maybe look at older commission and see possible new, not just specific transportation. So maybe a future agenda item would be considering, um, our commission structure, and look at what other cities have in the different commissions.
I believe that action is on the current work program.
Okay.
That's, okay.
Darcy, your turn.
So, in our upcoming, uh, March election for Santa Clara County, uh, there's going to be a bit of a change in terms of how people vote with regard to, um, the polling places on the day of. And so, there is now, uh, a push by legislation in order to outreach to the various communities affected. As part of that requirement, uh, there was a, uh, meeting over at the Calabazas branch of the San Jose Library on January eighth with a number of representatives from affected stakeholders. And so, um, I attended, uh, as, um, a representative from Cupertino to get a sense of whether there's something that we need to be doing in addition to what we've already done. Uh, a number of months ago, a, um, member of the Register of Voters Office reached out to me to see if I could put her in touch with our city manager, and this is very briefly after Deb had started, uh, to see if there are any facilities that would be, uh, usable for their purposes, uh, because they are consolidating the voting centers from many centers to, uh, just a handful, two, maybe three. Um, I, I don't want to misrepresent, but it, it is not going to be very many, uh, voting places on the day of for the, the polling locations. However, uh, what they are doing is they are expanding the number of days in which you can go to these polling places. Uh, so, uh, part of the outreach discussion is, how do we get this communicated to the electorate? Um, some people had suggested things such as posters on those prior, uh, polling places, but, um, it's an ongoing process. I didn't get too much of an indication that there was additional, um, measures that Cupertino needs to take in order to provide the facilities. And I, I did also get the sense that they are seeming to focus on this task force on the areas with lower voter turnout. We're not one of those areas. Um, our voter turnout is actually quite high. But I think that it's, it's good to, um, have that presence, and just let people know that we're making the commitment to make sure that, uh, the word gets out. So, um, that's part of, uh, the public service announcement and an effort to do that here at the end of tonight's meeting. And if there's anything else that we can be doing, perhaps, you know, noticing it in the Cupertino scene, uh, indicating to people on social media, uh, I, I think that would be very useful as well. Our city manager and I spoke to Supervisor Sumidian, uh, last week, and if you're familiar with his legislative work over the years, one of, uh, the things that he worked on when he was in, uh, the state senate was a series of bills over the course of three years on distracted driving. And so, what he's doing is he is following up in his capacity as supervisor for county, and making sure that, uh, that gets updated. Um, so, that was essentially a heads-up that, uh, he's going to make a push to, uh, update those set of requirements from the county level. Uh, it was interesting, he said that it cuts across demographics with regard to the desire for people to, um, have fewer number of distracted drivers. So it doesn't matter what ethnicity, or gender, or age. Generally speaking, people are very much in support of making sure that at least other people on the road aren't, you know, uh, you know, using their cellphone when they should be, uh, you know, staring at the, the road and other drivers. So, uh, those are the two items I want to report out on. Um, I don't really have, um, additional items that I'd like to add to our work plan, given the fact that our upcoming work plan is, um, is, is impending. But I, I would like to reiterate the idea of trying to, um, go forward with the civic center, um, and trying to see if we can try to study, you know, uh, traffic patterns over the course of a longer period of time. There are things like events, uh, there are, there are seasonal, um, ups and downs when school's out, particularly in the summer, for instance. I, I think it would, you know, be useful, uh, over time, to see when it gets particularly busy. And then maybe we can start talking about transit issues, uh, or transit solutions, such as with the Via Shuttle, or perhaps something else that we can implement. Um, I, I will also add, uh, with regard to, um, Rota Frye's comments, I think the, uh, the building code, uh, had to do with energy efficiency, and, uh, that, that was, I, I'm, maybe someone mentioned that, but, um, yeah, I, I'd support examining that and making sure that we're at the very least in line with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, and making sure that, you know, not, not that we're trying to make it more difficult, uh, to build, but in terms of trying to be part of the overarching solution, just making sure that we're supplementing what we've done, uh, that's good, with these other measures that will then say, hey, look, you know, if you're using electricity, it may not be as, um, inexpensive to, to heat in certain, you know, instances for, uh, for heating, for example. Um, but if you focus on energy efficiency, then that could really help alleviate some of those fiscal, uh, concerns. So, thanks much.
Adding, um, how about census? I think census will start on April first. Will we be, how would, how are this, how, what's the city's plan for outreach for census? Um, do we have a plan, or?
I'll have to look into that.
Okay, so I believe the, for the new voting method, everyone will get a mail-in ballot, right? So that's very different from before. It's by default, everyone will get mail-in ballot.
Which theoretically means you need less polling places, right?
Right.
Theoretically, yeah.
Yeah, that's why they do it this way. So maybe we can have like a presentation from the people who are doing census in, in the city, or, and also the voting, the new voting center.
Kenny, are you?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think we are done, that-
Wait, one more thing. Wait, one more thing. Lisa mentioned there is a building permit feedback survey, right?
We took note of it already.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, they'll look into that.
So do we, we don't know where, who is, who is going to, and who gets the result?
I haven't asked that.
We don't know.
Yeah, they'll look into that. Okay, sorry, I almost left out the staff reports, okay.
I just had one, one committee assignment since two, a month ago, or before the holidays, and then one announcement. I attend, of course, the monthly Santa Clara County City Managers Association meeting, and we had our 2020 kickoff, which basically sets the agenda for the rest of the year, so that's, the agenda will come out, and we'll, we'll know what we're talking about. In there is, we always get, we get a presentation from the housing folks at the county, transportation issues, and I always try to coordinate with the, the subcommittee, the members, the council members who are on those committees that, so that's how I'm trying to push out the information. The other thing I want to announce is tomorrow night is the first NASA talk in the NASA Speaker Series, starting with Mr. Jerry Davis. His title of his talk is interesting, "Life as an Existential Threat." I think if people come to that meet, come to that talk, you'll understand why he's talking that way. He is a very recognized, nationally-recognized cybersecurity professional.
You didn't have anything to do with this series, did you?
No.
Nothing, nothing to do.
And that's here, right?
It's here in Community Hall from 4:00 to 6:00.
Four, oh, 4:00 to 6:00, wow, that's early.
Well, we did that in coordination with the schools. So, so CUSD, Fremont, and Deans, because we had student and faculty interest, even though we have some other conflicts, but it theoretically should, should work out, okay.
That's right.
So, is this going to be recorded?
Yes.
Oh, that's great. So, sorry, one more item, regarding his, the funding for Historic Society. I understand it's 20,000 budget line item, but then I wonder about accountability and what exactly they are doing with that dollar. As I understand, in Saratoga, they, they have like, for example, a city council member sitting on the board, and that at least provides some...
So this can be an agenda item, but it's not on the agenda now?
So, yeah, can we consider that?
Well, I'm certainly supportive in going back to what we had, which is to treat them like all these other nonprofits.
I do support giving continuous funding for Historic Society because it's important, but accountability is important, so, yeah.
So, just, oh, next, next Wednesday, the 29th, will be the State of the City at Quinlan. What time is it at, 6:00? I guess I have to go. There'll be some good swag, will be reusable steel water bottles, and steel straws, and steel utensils. So come for the swag and the free food. The speech will probably be a little boring, but I'll try to keep it short.
And, and the mayor knows this, but I, I got tickets in the front rows for Hamilton that evening, so with no disrespect, I kind of have to do that.
I could go instead.
You could, yeah. So, if you don't see me, it's not because I didn't want to be there.
No, it's fine, okay, thank you. Anything else? Ooh, it's a new gavel, too, for a new year. Okay.